... explain, explain that to me. I didn't hear it. Yeah, the little, I never received the checks as well. Okay. So. Okay. It's usually a bit thick. Oh, now. No, no, we're gonna be. Oh, man. You're real last. I'll have everybody ready for when we call out.
I was saying, there could be six, six of us. There'd be five there. We're already on. I'm just looking at Bryce right there. He was trying to get on the head and she just didn't go down there once in a while. Two.
Now, I think it probably doesn't need more. But, 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 Bobby said he thought it was, we had to do this. But, he said he thought it was all the time. She was like, yeah, but, uh, Bobby would use it. That means, uh, it wasn't on the same work. I didn't know. Yes, sir. How come? They just didn't call it. It's our vote to the ladies. We're giving them a two, not a three. We can see how it's treated.
Yeah, from there. Cause I was only gonna do anything to do with it. Thank you. Oh, man. You're a real ass. I'll have everybody ready for when we call out.
I was saying, it could be six, six of us. It could be five there. We're already on. I'm just looking at Bryce right there. He was trying to get on the head and she just didn't go down there once in a while. Two.
Now, I think it probably doesn't need more. But, 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 Bobby said he thought it was, we had to do this. But, he said he thought it was all the time. She was like, yeah, but, uh, Bobby would use it. That means, uh, it wasn't on the same work. Why did he do that? I didn't know. 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 I didn't know.
Cause I was only gonna do anything to do with it. Thank you.
All right. I don't know. I'm okay. I was. I'm okay. 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 I'm okay.
I'm sure that one, so, when we went there, and I was like, this one, or by this one?
Heard it.
Cause I thought that that little.
Yeah. It was any reason, it was the new washing. It was pretty.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Grant.
That's March. Yeah. One eighty two and then. Well, you know, my first. When I tell you that money, what was that going to have? Woman stopped when I was a little kid. Okay. Say, where you don't live, I think I was with, you know, about the first row, it's like, yeah. Stop the woman, big Cadillac, New York, I just ripped the tag off her. Left. She said, is that, I got this place. Yes, ma'am. She said, can I have something? I said, I don't know. You know, that's happened for that good job. She said, I gave you two dollars. I said, let me hit you. They didn't last long. Right about the road, yeah. Yeah, come close to me. Yeah, big office, well, I, I, I. Okay, that's good. Yeah, they really. And I used to live, smell, you know, on, before the cops. There was nothing good, but, yeah. She left in a house, it had screens on. You didn't have to worry about. I wrote a draft from my post. I wrote, yeah. Nobody invited you, stop by here, so I just, George, I had a friend. You know, the boat, we didn't do it. Yeah. She left in a house, it had screens on. You didn't have to worry about. I wrote, yeah. I wrote, yeah. Nobody invited you, stop by here, so I just, George, I had a friend. You know, the boat, we didn't do it. Yeah. But, I mean, you didn't have to worry about. I wrote, yeah. I wrote, yeah. I wrote, yeah. Nobody invited you, stop by here, so I just, George, I had a friend. You know, the boat, we didn't do it. Yeah. Nobody invited you, stop by here, so I just, George, I had a friend. You know, the boat, we didn't do it. Yeah. 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 She. But, David, really, you mix with the last, just honestly. He says, nice, you have a pocket, you should like, serve well. Yeah. He said, he said, the model was. My aunt said, it was, of course. That's big, well, it's a. Same, it's great, Sam. Back in there, they seen, oh, send that paper, send that help us. Regular, I'll see you, guy. And then, yes, I know, I'm upset, it's a business way, that was on, that's the world's, uh, more than, uh, that role, actually. In future, he had, in, uh, he's a preacher, that he kept in his, uh, side, side. And he bought, uh, this, uh, place, uh, which he, uh, called, uh, that is, uh, he really, uh, would represent this, uh, uh, uh.
Don't say I'm not.
He's a bridge, uh, he actually, uh, and he was, uh, he was, uh, yeah.
Pretty, pretty much.
Uh-huh.
Second by Commissioner Chandler. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, Commissioner May?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
All right. Motion carries.
Governor number four in order to. Highlight number three. Jerome Stratton Jr., after for his uncle Jeff Stratton, is correct to rezone. Six point four three portion of A one from A one to A two. To allow an unequal land swap with the nephew six point four three acres. Or three point five acres with adjoining parcel. Creating a total of thirty six point one nine acres, which will stay in the A one zone. Property is located forty nine Middle Trail. In Rawson on map seventy four, district four. No one came forward. In favor of this rezon- rezone request, nor in opposition. The planning is only voted six to zero to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone here to speak for this request? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Stratton, is there anything like to add to that, or are you comfortable with?
No, sir, I'm good.
Mr. Scott present?
All right.
Hearing nothing from the floor, we'll close the floor, bring it back before the board, gentlemen, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kirk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chandler. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I'll simply ask the last one, but I'll ask all this, what the, the, the understanding of the land swap, the recombinations and whatnot, that is included in the motion.
Ask for, our, ask.
Yeah, that's requested.
That's requested.
Let's show good of the players.
Yeah.
Well, now, it has to be a condition, you know, so is it a condition or not, it has to be a motion.
I don't know that it needs to be.
In the way the request is, it's very specific of certain acreage, I don't know if it could be otherwise.
Because of flats before you, that is just.
So the land swap would be a condition, the six point four three acres? Okay.
The what now?
The, so the land swap, when we swap the land, the six point four three for the three point five acres, the total of the thirty six point one nine? Will be a condition of the rezone to A two.
All right.
All right, stating that, saying that, yeah, okay, very good.
All right, so that motion is to stand. Okay. The second, any other discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, Commissioner Kirk?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
All right, Governor number five. Ken Brannigan, the question to rezone is seven point seven five acres from A two to A R. To allow, to allow a one point three nine four acre split. To be sold to adjoining property owner. To straighten up the property line, lines and for desired wooded area. Leaving the balance of six point three five six acres. The property is located on two oh five. Charlie Bolton Lane, not Charlie Bolton Road, Charlie Bolton Lane. In hole, map one, district three. Mr. Dumont spoke in favor of the request. Uh, no one spoke in opposition to the request. The planning is only voted six to zero to approve.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Mr. Brannigan, is there anything you'd like to add to that, sir?
No, first time.
All right. We'll close the floor, bring it back before the board, entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I make a motion to approve this request.
Sir, I have a motion by Commissioner May, second by Commissioner Kirk. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I will make my same comment, that the motion would. Commissioner, entertain the motion to make sure that the. Recombination of both the tracks and the number noted in five to six. They go together.
All right.
I'm not sure how to state that, so.
Yeah, well, and, and sometimes, let me just explain, so sometimes. A, the rezone would be for too small parcel unless the recombination happened. I don't think that's the case with either three or four, or five or six, and that's why P and Z didn't impose conditions. If you want to impose that condition, that's, that's discretion of the board.
At this point, we would be, uh, voting to approve. As presented. In the, the minutes in the motion for the, the combination.
The motion would read as presented to allow.
That's right.
The split. So we can present it as to allow the condition of.
Yeah, y'all haven't been thinking that just because you say the motion is as presented, that somehow you're imposing a condition already, have you? Okay. Cause normally what you, again, in these situations, you just rezone from. In this case, from A two to A R, if the tract is over the, the minimum, it doesn't matter if he combines it or changes his mind, so you wouldn't impose a condition. But if you really want to say he has to do it that way, you got to impose a condition. As presented, doesn't mean anything.
And this one would maybe be the one point three nine, it's only being on the forty. So the, the, the condition would be that it does be combined with, with Mr. Brannigan's property.
Well, but he's rezoning the seven seven five from A two to A R.
Correct. But the.
Now, the next one would be the one he's rezoning one point one five from A two to A R. Uh, that's the one that is already nonconforming. We only rezone nonconforming to make it conformant, and number six is the one that would need the condition, would be combined, somehow things to met on.
Correct, so, well, we're on number five, and, and when I say as presented, I mean with the verbiage presented for the rezone. So, item number five is a question of rezone from seven point seven five acres from A two to A R to allow one point three nine, so I'm letting that be as presented, so, cause you go back and look at this thirty years from now. And they're gonna say, how did it come to be, they're gonna look and say, oh, right here's what they requested. And this is what was voted on for approval. But it's not a condition, though. A condition would be if we just said, yes, you're allowed to do that, but you can't build anything bigger than a so and so, or.
So I'm confused, so you say, does that mean that if he does not split off the one point three nine four acres, then the rezone isn't valid?
Technically, they won't go by that. You won't go by the verbiage, but I don't know if that's legal.
No, it's not.
When you present it, um, how else do you read the description?
So, uh, it, it varies, it's all over the map, uh, Okodah County, for example, and many others, uh, they have an application package, it's very extensive. Uh, and the application includes that everything, uh, that's presented will become condition of the rezone, the staff prepares a resolution. Uh, that recites that, that the board approves.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the fact. All right, any other discussion, gentlemen?
Yeah, just a question not related to this, is Charlie Bolton Lane? A private drive or a?
Private drive.
Yep. Yes, sir.
I wish it was a road. How many? How many homes or properties are owned? Charlie Bolton Lane.
That's eight, one, two, three, four, five, six?
Yep.
If we. And I, I'm just asking, what, we, we did some stuff to private drives. And this is my question, we did some stuff to private drives. If we modify this, and I don't have an objection to modifying. Does the private drive have to come in compliance with what our private drives are named?
Um, I don't think so, uh, we looked at that the other day, the way I would interpret it is when a private drive is created, those. Those requirements apply, doesn't mean that all existing ones have to be brought up to that.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing something that was gonna. Stumble into something.
Uh, yeah, I don't think so, I think that's just if, if, uh, a private drive is created.
Good question. Any other discussion, gentlemen?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, let me add to that, now, if there's a private drive, so that those requirements apply to serving two or more residences. So if there's a private drive that's currently only serving one. And then something is changed at this point in time, and it starts serving two, it's gonna have to be brought up to spec.
Or we're serving six.
Correct.
Okay.
But we're not changing it, but we're not.
Yeah, so I mean, so it's, yeah, so, to use the, the old term, it's grandfather, it's already in existence.
Well, I mean, in part I'd hence the, the conversation is that, you know, the condition of. If you've got two tracks and somebody wants to swap a little land, that's kind of maintains status quo. Acreage might change a little bit here or there, but if we don't separate the lots. But if you don't, or at least in my mind, is a straight rezone from A two to A R. And you're not putting a condition on it. And number six says it doesn't happen, number six fails. Then, you know, we've just rezoned A two to A R.
In this particular case, it would not matter because it's too small to divide.
Today. Or somebody else could come in and say, I've got a piece of property that's on A R, I'd like to cut it in half, because, you know, I mean.
Your point's well taken, and so normally the, the applicant would request, and the board would. Uh, agree to hear those two together as a single application of public hearing, so. So the owner doesn't end up with number five branded number six denied.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm worried about that one, we want another one that's coming up, so we've already had that discussion. Uh, but yes, good point, while. Any other discussion? Or good discussion? All right, hearing none, uh, I think Mr. Kirk is on you.
Yes.
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 Yeah. All right, motion carries.
All right, Governor number six. And those are number five. Ken Brannigan, applicant for his neighbor Mike Dumont. The question to rezone one point one five acres from A two to A R. Allow him to absorb a one point three nine four acre. From adjoining property, straighten up property lines into a quite desired wooded area. For a total of two point five five acres, the property is located. One eighty, Charlie Bolton Lane, in hole, in district three.
Anyone here to speak in opposition to this? Rezone present? Anyone here to speak in favor of this? Rezone present? Again. Your goodness. Knows.
All right.
He has nothing else to add. Thank you, sir. We'll close the floor, bring it back before the board, gentlemen, we'll entertain a motion.
How do we need to work this?
So this one would be motion to approve the rezone in condition that, um. That the one point one five acres be combined. Uh, with additional property to bring it up to. Let's see, that was, this one must be under the, uh, old two acres, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, so it'd be combined with additional acreage to bring it to the two acre minimum, which is the old, you know.
You got that.
She got it.
Make a motion to approve it, that's good. Motion by Commissioner May, second by Commissioner Adams. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I have a question, I'm Mike Dumont. What kind of conditions were, were you talking about putting on this?
Just that, you know, when you, when you buy the property and sell the property, that you actually recombine those two lots. That the property be sold. Yeah.
Yeah. Just saying that you'll do what's on this paper, but they have to formally make it a condition, or else they rezoned a property that's too small for classification.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Got it, got it.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
It's approved. Number seven.
Election on the highway there.
Number seven.
Still have my questions, just over here to answer.
Tom Martin. Advocate for Michael, Kip, Martin, and Lucy Huff, is requesting to rezone. An eleven acre portion. Of the forty eight point oh four acres from A one to A two. To allow eleven acres with an existing home to be split off for settlement. The remaining thirty seven acres will stay in A one zone. The property is located at nineteen ten Lem Edwards Road in Carbut. In district five. No one came forward in favor, and no one came forward in opposition to. The planning and zoning voted six to zero to approve.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak in opposition to this rezone request? Anyone here to speak in favor? Hearing, hearing none, Mr. Tom Martin, you present? Is there anything you'd like to add to Mr. Scott?
I'm good.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we'll close the floor, bring it back before the board, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the rezone.
Motion by Commissioner Donald, yeah, second. Second by Commissioner Adams. Gentlemen, any discussion?
I did have a question, I didn't see in the package. The estimated eleven acres to be cut off. Do we have that, or was that?
There's no point having what?
Just.
I do have a question, that has, has an access.
She has her own access off of McCurley Road.
So is that eleven, that appears, does it have access to something else? So she must own the zero zero four seven eighty seven eight on the back side of that, that little portion? I can't tell by this one.
Uh, she doesn't. She sold what she had before, she lives on this land, which was, it's all three of the kids owns this piece of property. Well, she gets eleven acres of it, so we just want to have her. Put on her eleven acres, so she can start paying her own taxes and doing all that. Tired of paying her taxes, like that, what's the bad. I mean, that, what's the bad. It's her, her wrong.
Are these any eleven acres?
I think it has access to another, off of another road, that would no need for easement.
The way the. I may have shown that there's not even, there's not a road. It can access.
Chris, you might want to look at this map. I've got it black and white, guys.
Yes, it would work there unless they made it east, but they could make.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's, that all happens if the.
So that eleven acres, they're bought right there, yep.
There's already a pre-existing easement.
Okay. Okay, this, so I want to do enough. Thank you. Sorry. Our maps didn't have that.
Okay.
I apologize.
But it is pre-existent, we're not creating them.
That's fine. It's better. With that being said, any other discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, number eight. Katie Barber. Out for her grandfather. Billy Henson is requested to rezone. His three point oh five acres from A one to R one. To bring the nonconforming property supplies to allow. For a one point five acre split. To give his granddaughter to go home on the property. The locate, the property is located at thirty three eleven. Adams Club Road in Danielsville on map thirteen, parcel fourteen eight, in district one. There was no one came to speak in favor of this rezone request, nor anyone to come to speak in opposition. But this one had a lot of discussion from the planning and zoning. Particularly because this is the first R one that we have had since the new comprehensive plan had been adopted. So you can imagine that there was a lot of discussion over how many went back and looked at the film, there was a lot of discussion. There was a lot of discussion and a lot to be considered by the board members. The existing land used in this area. Could the land be used in accordance with the existing zoning? What, what are the gains if we went strictly by the comprehensive plan? What are the gains, uh, or, or what hardship would it put, impose on the landowners? Is it fair to all regardless of financial status? The P and Z, although not unanimous. Recommended. Approval of this rezone request. The vote was five to one to approve.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone here to speak in favor of? Is Miss Barber, you present? Katie Barber? Or Billy Henson? Yes, sir. Let us know what you're trying to do, sir.
Oh. I didn't want to divide it up where I could be where I go to the house.
All right. Um, based off of, where does this stand today, Eddie or Christopher one? This list of stuff?
There is currently an open permit, uh, this expires permit. Um, for a mobile home that was moved to this property, and now there are two homes on the property. Which is developed into a court case. Um, and they expire the permit, so that has to be resolved. The two homes are not in a, they're not located where you could actually split, split the property between the two units. Uh, it was a situation where one was gonna be replacing another.
But they're both still there?
So they are both still there, correct.
Any, any thoughts on that? One was there to replace the other.
The lady that was living on the property, she had a, a single wide mobile home. And she moved a, a double wide in. And she's in process, of course, she's had some problems. She's in the process of getting it set up. But the, but the one that she presently living in will be demolished and moved away.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you, sir. There's no other discussion from the floor, we'll close the floor, bring it back before the board, gentlemen, entertain a motion.
Looking at the. History of this, the only one history of this. The fact that there's still, uh. It would appear today, Eddie, for Chris and Eddie, tell me if I'm wrong, there's still. A potential for a, a no-show record, I assume that there's gonna be some judgment. And possibly another fine related today.
That's correct, she's previously been in court, and the fines were levied, and she, I, she has paid her fines at the last court, she did not make it up here.
And the last court date was nine nineteen?
Yes.
A real nice eye was issued, uh, we don't issue venture warrants until two no-shows take place.
So, so let me ask you something, now, this is, this is regarding the renter, not the property owner.
That's right.
Correct. Okay, so this is, this would be irrelevant to the property owner and the split. Because, unless you're bringing the owner of the property to court. Bringing the renter to court has no, no valid stance on the property owner. Am I correct?
No.
Now, if we do that, we can table this until we get this matter cleared up, but it would have to be through the property owner, not the renter.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with all of this, but, um. I would think that from a code enforcement standpoint, so it is the zoning ordinance here. Enforcing. And violations having to go with the zoning law, so you could either cite the party who did that with the permission of the owner, or the owner, or both. Would be my take on it.
And we have cited the, the permit holder.
Okay. Yeah.
Which the renter.
Which has been ongoing.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but nonetheless, there's a. There's a condition on the property which is enforceable ultimately against the owner.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, entertain a motion for rezone.
Mike, you don't have to tell me another word there, but I'm gonna make the motion just be denied until this mess is cleared up. Why would I do that?
So do you want to deny it, and then they can reapply? Or do you want to postpone the decision?
I would, I would request a table of the decision if you don't do that.
Okay.
Because this is the applicant supplying for the rezone, not the renter. And we have a tenant problem, so the, the owner could take care of the tenant.
Yeah.
So just table it until you get that taken care of, you're correct.
I would suggest postponing it until a, a date's served, so it could just hang out there forever, though.
It is due to come back to court if this weighs in on any others, the seventeenth of this month. Um, it's due to come back in this cycle.
I wasn't aware that any kind of a court action was taken, for this late. I understand, sir. They, um. When I was going through my granddaughter's house, that's when I found out about it. And, um. Really, I don't, I just don't know what to do. I'm talking about, um, if, um. If she don't, if she don't, well, if you don't rezone it. There won't be anything to be done anyway. The only thing I'll, the only thing I'll have to do is take a disposition at once for her. And get her off of the property. Question being. Am I gonna be able to build my granddaughter's house?
Good point, yes, you, uh. I'm not gonna give legal advice by no means, because you don't want my legal advice, trust me. Uh, but I would think that that would be the very first step. Is to go before the seventeenth, I know you're not the. I think, I think we're on two different pages, and I don't think we need to be holding. You accountable for a tenant's action, even though it is your tenant, it is your pros, uh, pro, it is your problem never. Uh, to fix the tenant issue. I, I agree with Commissioner Adams with that statement, that it is up to you to get that problem straightened out. Because we cannot let that lag on because it holds your rezone up, if this rezone is being held today based off of a tenant. Um, I'll be fixing that. And that's why I would say I would table this for a matter of like three months, I, I don't know how fast you're trying to get a house built for your daughter. Uh, it's, my suggestion would be to table it for three months and try to get the tenant took care of, so you can come in and ask for a proper rezone without any snags, I don't know, I'm, I don't.
They, uh. I'm not familiar with. I didn't notice that she had been cited.
I understand, sir.
Naturally, she wouldn't tell me, you know, but she's been living there for years and years and years, and, uh. But. Until, until he said that she's been cited, you know, for violation of the permit.
I'm not aware of that. Mike, could we, uh, could the motion be made, uh, for the rezone? With the condition of all this must be handled before permits could be pulled for the new one?
Uh, no, we, we, we've got a history of.
But not with the owner?
Well, forgive me, but I'm, I'm hard placed, it's really difficult for me to separate one from the other. At, at the end of the day, the owner's responsible for what takes place on his property, that's right.
For zoning violations, sure, that's right.
I mean, it, and, and, that's black and white.
That's black and white, yeah. Zoning's about land use, and that's the owner's responsibility ultimately.
But are we, is violation, are we in violation of a land use, or are we in violation of code? Cause he's not in violation of a land use today, he's got code enforcement issues.
No, well, isn't, isn't it two lots, so, yeah, two houses on one lot, that's a, that's a zoning order violation.
Didn't pull permits until one of the structures was removed.
So they pulled a, they did not pull a permit.
The, the initial permit was under the condition that one home would be removed within sixty days of the other one being sealed. That's not why that would be allowed.
So the permit condition was to prevent the violations.
Correct. Uh, now I got you, thank you, sir.
This originated before our current board back in June. This originated for our current board back in June of twenty, correct?
Well, this was, the permit was actually issued in twenty-one, August twenty-one, and, uh, replacing a mobile home and removing within thirty days of final.
I'm looking at the pre-hail and safety.
Yeah, the pre-hail and safety goes all the way back to twenty, and it had to be actually.
We've got a land use. They have to wait to pull the permit. We couldn't, by what's in black and white, so to say, we couldn't issue a third home on the property.
Is the second home sitting there?
Yes.
I mean, is it just sitting there? It's not?
Yeah.
She moved a, she, she moved a double wide mobile home on the property, and she was supposed to get it set up, but I didn't know that, I did not know that she was in violation of her permit. She got a permit to move it in, but evidently, I, I don't know anything about no code enforcement officer. He, he's never contacted me, you know, period. And, uh, but I can tell you one thing. If she don't get that mobile home set up, I'm going to pick, the only, that's the only choice that I have. I mean, I feel sorry for the lady, but I can't have a violation against me from what she don't do.
I understand, sir.
This is a picture of the mobile home sitting up on the road, and behind it, in the tree selected between the existing mobile home with the lady originally.
And that's the one that, that's the one that she's living in at the present time.
One of the back.
And that one, that one is definitely going to be gone, because she has got to either set, hang up, or she's got to move. And she's already in trouble with the, with the, uh, permit department.
I would make a motion just being denied at this time to like this, their side. I have a motion by Commissioner, uh.
So, but that's just a denial, so that means they have to, Mr. Henson have to reapply after the forty-month time period is.
Six months.
Six months, yeah.
We've got, we've got a history of three years.
Yes, sir. I just, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with what you're suggesting, just clarify, and that's the motion.
I'll second the motion tonight.
All right. So, I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, I have a second by Commissioner Doster. Any other discussion, gentlemen?
Just one thing, just from, just from Mr. Henson's information, if the end result for you is you have to picture, picture ten of there, then, then, then no rezon actually needs to occur, there'd be just one residence there for your granddaughter there, and you would not need a rezon.
What you, if, if I'm interpreting what you're telling me, if I get rid of her, I can walk into the building department and, and get a permit to build that?
On the three acres as it exists.
With, with, with the mobile homes?
When, when they're gone.
Gone. Gone. I understand, but if you get rid of both homes.
Yeah.
Not just one. That would leave you one home on one parcel.
On one home on the three acres.
Yes, yes, sir. But if you choose not to, one of those two homes has got to go, and then you got to come in and ask for a rezon to go for the second.
Well, I can assure you one thing, I didn't know about all this stuff.
I understand, sir.
But that, that one that she's living in, she's either going to be living in it, or she's going to move that double wide.
I understand before this, sir. Any other discussion, board? Hearing none, uh, Dennis, it's on you, sir.
To deny? Yes, it would be denied.
Yes, on the motion to deny?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Motion is denied, means now you know what to do, sir.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Thank you. My last question regarding is, and here again, I'm not, this is on our side of the closing, uh, to clean up what we're doing and perhaps avoid something like this in the future. What was P and Z, the many aware of all of this? I can't go.
I actually made a condition that they had come into compliance before.
Or do we, or shouldn't we have a policy that, that no, uh, no request can be issued on, on processes that there's pending that has an ongoing case of?
I agree with you a hundred percent, we shouldn't have come.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, I was thinking about that. That's actually a, that's one of your legitimate reasons to deny, is if there's an existing violation of the property. I don't think it's mandatory as it's worded right now, but.
We actually do have it in our, our wording, uh, it's the tracing it, which our new software system is don't go by parcel, just not by property owner. The violations were in the tenant's name, not in his name, and it came underneath. But it is currently in ordinance if there's a violation of a property, then no due request or anything. No modification to land use or zoning.
You know, we need to take that a step further. We, we need to do our due diligence to make sure there's no back taxes, there's no outstanding liens, that the county holds, there's any code violations, county has, and that way they can get it cleared up before they get here. Honestly, I feel sorry for him if he did not know that was taking place. You know, if he lived in Florida, he would not, but anyway.
Just for the record, we did send him a letter.
It would, the reason I ask, it would be my hope that we are in agreement, P and Z and the B F C, um, in our butt. I, I mean, you know, we're all recently in, well informed here, and I, I just, I honestly, and here again, not busting to anybody, but I don't know how this got to take. Because, because at the end of the day, and forgive me, Mr. Henson's gone now, so he won't hear this, but at the end of the day, I'm pretty sure that if there was a double wide on my property, I'd know that, and I'd know what was going on.
And the application, did it say what date they came in?
It's the, uh, same turnaround date, it should be at the top left. Now, of course, this permit also came before we revamped it as well. We did the permit revamping last year.
When did, when was the first citation due?
Yeah, it was in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty. So, this is twenty-three? I'm still questioning, too, how many months have been out there so long? That's the other question. I mean, not getting, I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah.
Justice.
Yeah. We're going to find where the lab is, and it goes.
So, we just fall off.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, brother, for that. Mr. Scott?
Okay. Just, just one last comment on this one, and, and I apologize, and, well, Steve is right, she did make the condition that, that, that they fall in line, but we did not have that total paper that you all have of the violation, of the total violation.
That just got me.
Yeah. That it was brought up that there was some violations, but we, but we as a complete board did not know what all the violations were.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm just saying, there's a lot of questions that we need to move in forward that we need to, to look into.
In fairness to you guys, y'all need all the facts to.
Yeah.
What, what Mr. Rose quoted out is obviously, I, I can see where this could have happened because the citation are against the tenant, and it went tied to the property owner or something. I could see where that could easily have been skipped over, just up where you think.
Where the new, where it won't be tied to the name, it'll be tied to the parcel.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be helpful.
All right, moving on. All right, number nine. Roger Waring, or Warring, has requested a rezon of six point oh-two acres from A one to A R to bring the property to comply with zoning regulations, and to ally a second home on the property for his son as an accessory dwelling. The property is located at two seventy-nine Broward Twelve and Hall, District One. There was no one came forward to speak in favor of this request, nor in opposition. The defending is zoning board is six to zero to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Mr. Warren, are you present?
Yes, sir.
Are you comfortable with Mr. Scott, or would you like to add something, sir?
No, I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you, sir. Um, hearing nothing else from the floor, we'll close the floor, bring it back before the board. Gentlemen, entertain a motion.
I have a motion, this request to be approved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, I have a second. Second by Commissioner May. Any discussion, gentlemen?
For the clear occasion, for a, for a sister dwelling unit, didn't it allow under A one? Was it?
It is allowed. You have a minimum acreage for an A U.
So, A one got.
Got to A R.
That was changed back in May, wasn't it, to A one? Nothing but we're under the age.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
This request was made after the change.
All right. No other discussion. Commissioner Shannon?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, sir. Old Business Presentation by Animal Control Service by Christopher. Mr. Scott, thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't really complain here, but anyway, if you're looking to let me watch, we finished the review. You just really like the watch.
Sorry, listen. And they're outside the night. That's a good call. That's a right call.
It was.
So, uh, in going back to what we discussed at the beginning of last month, uh, Animal Control Police up and running, uh, we're looking at two and a half employees that's running twenty-four seven for calls, somebody who always have to be on duty. What you see in front of you is what I was in the discussion with, with our H R and our finance department, based off of our wage, where everybody would be. You'll see one employee, uh, whose name is on there at the midway down through at Mr. Dewey, and his salary coming, coming over with him from this time in, with the county. And starting pay for one full-timer would be seven fifty with benefits, and then a part-time person maxed at twenty hours a week, uh, per discussion with H R and finance, at fifteen dollars an hour. With all benefits and wages come together, we'd be looking at one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-six just in employees. Ballpark figure is we've been going through equipment list that I'd have to price, price out after the point in time, prices are coming up almost daily, um, for different things, and I've been able to also find some organizations that will grant equipment out. Actually, just found that out today at Animal Control Training. Not, not all the equipment, but at least a little bit coming in. We're still looking at roughly five thousand dollars per person to set them up. That's the initial fee to get all the equipment for each person set up and their training. So, you can safely add another fifteen thousand at a minimum to the wages, not including paper, computer, office supplies, things of that nature that may or may not come available at the point in time. We are working to revamp two computers that Animal Control does have to see if we can bring them in instead of having to purchase new computers at this point in time. Also, there are variables that are hard to determine, a separate, vet bills, euthanasia, things, things of that nature coming over that I have been reaching out, system that limits about maybe donating hours, but we still have to purchase serums and medicine and things of that nature. In going into that, also revamping our ordinance, it won't be another night experience. There's a lot of things changing currently on federal and state level, uh, as far as requirements go nationwide, especially with rabies vaccinations, possibly working in a spade neuter if we do take an animal in and it's clean, and things of that nature that would apply into that ordinance. Also, we're kind of constricted at this point in time because the ordinance hasn't been addressed since two thousand fifteen. Uh, I believe it was changed, or brought up in fifteen and changed in sixteen. We only charge ten dollars a day impound and fee. We, we'll have more than that, and a dog, including upkeep, including an employee's time. There's things that are constraining Animal Control at this point in time from actually not costing the county money when an incident does occur. Twenty-five dollar impound fee, and ten dollars a day with three-day hold, that's fifty-five dollars. That's, that's all we see. So, there's some things, that's just one example, out of the Animal Control ordinance that would have to be addressed. And this is all based off of availability of vehicles as, as well as we can move those around in the county.
Vehicle needs?
Vehicle needs, a dog box used to be able to get away with a single vent enclosure. Now, you have to have a minimum of two vents, the door doesn't include it. The old dog box that we have, the only one that we have at this point in time.
I've got a truck first.
Oh, well.
So, how many trucks you talk?
We're going to have one more.
We have one.
We have one.
You talk about any of the trucks?
Yes, I have.
The only way these numbers is going to work, guys, I'm going to be straight up with you, these numbers will not work. If you, the, the numbers work with what Christopher told you, it's going to take two people and a part-time person. That's the only number here that does work. To be able to justify that job being solely that job won't never wash, you'll, you'll lose money quicker than fire department. Animal control calls, one, maybe two a day, do the math on that, do the math on your hundred twenty thousand dollars. You got to find a double duty. These guys need to be double vivian somehow, it's just the math don't work. I mean, you're talking about paying somebody, two people here full-time with benefits, that's an average of two hundred fifty, three hundred dollars a day, and they may, on five days, fifteen hundred dollars into it, and they may run three calls that week. And then you got to have people and get dogs. Now, the, the worst part about this is the fact that once we got the dog, three days later, unfortunately, that dog can be put to sleep, because no ass has no completely pull, completely pull. They said, I mean, I've talked with them, and they're nice, they want to work with us, willing to work with us, just don't have to. But three days later, I don't care if it's a goddamn road's dog that you may have been high school buddies with, and you don't know that they just got a new dog, they run off. When we get it, three days later, if he ain't got a collar, that dog's dead, and you can go explain that to them. This is going, this is a lot tougher than y'all think. It's not just about Animal Control. This is probably one of the financially biggest disasters on the planet, but, but I know we got to have it. I know we got to have this. I don't want y'all to think that I'm opposed to this, I just want you to understand the map behind it. This is tough. This is a tough one, and it needs to be thought through very, very clearly. That's the reason we've done this until, we hoped we could run like we're running until December thirty-first, so we'll be able to track with the, what we have now going, how many calls we've had. Do we need one and a half person? Do we need that other part-time person to be the filling guy for the full-time guy that's off? Do we truly need two people and one more part-time? I, I don't think, we've got enough data collected yet to, to make a call of this scale, because that one twenty automatically goes to one fifty-five when you, it actually goes to close to two hundred by the time we outfit it, buy the catch sticks, buy the pins, buy the feed, buy the serum, buy the truck, we're two hundred grand.
I have a small part of one sixty-five.
Yeah, it's close.
Cheap. Not, not including the truck. That truck would definitely fall over.
Now, we, we have made it real clear. Matter of fact, on the way in here, call, come over the radio on what it's meaning. They called for S O, they said there's two dogs fighting in the road. They're fighting in the road. Take a water hose spray off. But as soon as that Animal Control guy gets there and tries to make up two dogs fighting, now he's bit. Now we're at that in reach. So, there's a lot of good about this, but there's a lot of, a lot of negative. Really have to play our cards right to make this right.
Yeah, but we got to make sure we keep the citizens.
So, we do.
I agree.
The, Joey does have a vehicle now, and then we've got the, the section one truck, the white Ford. It's an older one, yes, but after talking to.
The, Joey does have a vehicle now and then we've got the, the section one truck, the white Ford. It's an older one, yes, but after talking to Jack, he said that we should not buy a new vehicle, they need to be, uh, hand me down.
Yeah. That's the point. I think a new rear end and that thing, then see another hundred thousand.
It is a good truck, just granted on the...
Just breaking here, Joey's already budgeted for this year, right?
He's not budgeted out of animal control, so how he turns in his timesheet when he runs animal control calls, we pull those hours out of the animal control budget. What's left in the sheriff's office?
Uh, how much is in the...
Probably thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, we got enough to get through this year simply. But see during the day when he's not running animal calls, he's doing our building maintenance.
So what you have in front of you...
He's changing light bulbs and fixing door locks and so forth like that. And then when he gets a call, he drops where he does and runs a call.
One thing, um, that we could consider doing, uh, as we do with code enforcement now, code enforcement backs building inspection. We have budgeted for one new code enforcement officer. If we looked at a dual role, we could have, one of those already in the budget for next year with that, we can step back to building inspection, this code enforcement officer would be code and animal control. Um, that, that's one solution I was trying to come up with to where we, we lowered the budget for animal control.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question is because we're talking about dual roles. What are some dual roles that they can do?
Yeah, they all really gonna be working together, is what I'm saying, so, and, you know.
It just has to be that the priority has to be whoever's the animal control, whenever there's a call, that is the priority.
Yes, sir. Yes. One of the things that sort of got a little bit out of hand the last time we had this conversation, not, not out of hand, I don't mean it that way, wrong choice of words, um, we made a statement that we would let that office down there fill those calls. We don't have an office per, person filling animal control calls because they carry cellphones that the number one calls directly. They call the animal control now, they don't have to call in here and say, I have a reported dog. They call animal control center and report it. Because all those calls are generated from now, one of the SO offices.
They all come to me and then I have to, well, right now vicious animal, if it's a vicious animal, I, I drop what I'm doing and if I need help, I call Joey out on it.
Yes, yeah. I, I know it's a tough position and it's, it's unfortunate that our sheriff department can't help but handle that.
Prior, prior to this discussion beginning, where were these nuisance animals being housed and how were they being kept?
The ones that are in our custody or the...
Yes, yes.
Um, I don't know if that's the way to say it, our animal control kennels, um, at the transfer station, um, back over at the dead animal pit, we do have kennels that have been brought up to state standards and are ready to rock, we just have to reestablish ourselves with the state. After a period of six months, then you go inactive and you just have to activate it again. When we're ready, I already have that path set up with GDA at this point.
And one of the, one of the concerns, one of the reasons for needing more hours of officers, is them being responsible for the care of the, whatever animals are, would be, are actually impounded. So was, has it been considered that, uh, that, that we partner with the, uh, animal shelter and let that be, have them take that on as part of their responsibility as well? Obviously it'd be limited and it'd be short duration of time, but rather than having personnel, extra personnel tied up with feeding and care of those animals in a separate facility, could we, could we impose on the animal shelter to, to be our impound housing?
That's an idea that, that we have filled, but, um, and I just found out today at training that, no, we can't do that because it's an impounded animal, not a, uh, surrender, thank you, surrendered animal.
Can, can we have, can we have impound facilities within the animal shelter and then be treated separately, but, uh, but the same personnel that's there, big management and care?
You could if we owned it, but we could, we probably could get the contract to rewrite and then be paid a little bit extra for them to feed over, feed and water over the weekend versus just coming in. It makes perfect sense.
Because they're already there.
Yeah, it would, uh, but again, that's just gonna be in, in changing our allotments of funding that we give them now because they are private organization, we just fund them.
The, the other thing is, uh, rabid animals, we cannot introduce them into that kind of environment.
But we know they're rabid, we're not introducing them anywhere.
Technically, if we take one up, we, we have to keep it ten days to check.
We know which rabid?
Uh, how are we gonna know which rabid without...
That's what I'm saying, so we don't know which rabid until we don't track.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not introducing a rabid animal.
But it's a, it's a thing. Well, we're, chicken, poultry house terms, you got, uh, your house is empty, you're gonna get a flock in a few weeks and Phil Dale needs to throw some in there, you, you don't know what those chickens have, it's another Phil Dale farmer that could be carrying something. It comes down to, uh, GDA regs with how the proposed animals in the quarantine pen, we do that.
What did we do before with rabid animals?
We held them ten days and...
Where did, where did they help, hold them at?
At the facilities we have now at the transfer station service.
Can, can that, uh, secure facility be confined or can, can it be a part of animal shelter?
Part of the function of the animal.
Well, even, even, you know, can you, can you create a quarantine area within...
Hundred yards of what?
You have to be hundred yards.
Hundred yards, I'm saying.
Hundred yards.
They have, have TP, tour going in and out between the, I'm sorry, I'm going through those regs right now in my mind, but I'm not saying it could be, but there's a lot of to go to, to go to that one.
The bottom line is this, you just gave us the reason we need to go ahead and do this and then we're sitting on this side of the table talking about money as a reason not to do it. Uh, I, I mean, this is a catch twenty-two that we can talk about from now on.
That's right.
This is growing pain job.
Yeah.
We're gonna provide human services to the county, we're gonna have to provide stuff like this. I mean, either that or just tell everybody, if you don't watch it, you are chewed, you know, and I don't think that's the appropriate thing, but...
Well, yeah.
All right, we'll just keep working on trying to make this come together.
Christopher, couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, the do-nothing option is we still have to provide danger, the danger stall.
Right.
I think they changed the name, the same statute. And then what about rabid animals if, you know, if you could do nothing options and by statute says we just gotta deal with the dog, you know, something like calls and raccoon in the garage or whatever, what?
Z and O.
You call E and O.
Yes, sir. And then we actually get more, in, in my office, we get more complaints or calls on possible rabid wildlife than we actually do came out of.
So with that thought process, other questions I've had are idea in animal health. If there's any reality and there not, you know, we do have a couple, you know, because we bugged, I will, you know, we do have some reputable, like a dog, like a guy that trains the police dogs or whatnot, is there any possible way that we could contract with one of those, somebody that's capable in a manner to, like, do a response on a, a dog or a weekend or so? I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, instead of a full salary for a whole year, how do we get somebody that, you know, you pay them, you know, whatever contract value be, you know...
Per call basis?
Yeah, and you pay them, you know, twenty thousand dollars a year to handle, fix it before it works.
I'll, I'll tell you from personal experience, I, I have a state registered account for my burden dogs. Uh, as the county came and asked me in where I live, hey, would you come and do this? I wouldn't tell you, so I lost chance in Hagens. Um, the dogs, that, that have the kennels, feller, his dogs are worth a lot more than mine, but you're talking about a two hundred thousand dollar dog and he might have twenty-five of them, he's not gonna risk it going out somewhere dealing with animals that he doesn't know anything about, doesn't know if they're rabid or if they have...
We also have the, the, the law life removal guys in Madison County, those guys.
I'm not saying bring them back in the house one time, but it's like, there's a stray dog out in my yard, can he respond with a catch pole? He would probably know how to react more to dogs versus somebody else, catch it, be able to transport it over to the facility and say, there it is. Uh, I mean, I, I'm not trying to say, he's gotta take them home to their house, but I'm just...
Would it be cheaper on insurance if an employee got this or if we had to pay out to a private contractor?
Probably. I'm trying to...
What we're, what we're saying is we just need to investigate how it looks like.
Oh, and that's decent.
Well, this, we're gonna try to provide this service and do it as reasonably as we can and even look at all those possibilities.
And, and sort of look at broad, like, what can these folks do when they're not doing dog control or whatever and, and get that. Because I know that the sheriff and discussions I have with him, you know about, because we got this thing now where we don't, can't have inmates over at the transfer station, which a lot of people, I hear a lot of complaints about that when it comes to that, but, but some of these folks, I'm told by the sheriff that it's not that hard to become certified where you can actually work the inmates, that you can be there and that you can supervise them and that kind of stuff. So can we get some of that dual purpose and then have them doing things with the inmates also that profitable, that's helpful to the county and to the city?
Yes, sir. And just, uh, since we've moved forward from last month, uh, Mr. Joey is actually one of those certified individuals and when the call came up for a vicious animal attack over in the Harrison area, we couldn't respond as quick enough because before he could go himself, he had to take those inmates back across the county to the jail before he could...
And logistically, I mean, I, I just, but that's what I'm saying, just looking at all those kind of instances. Yeah, I mean, logistically it could be, it could be tough, but if we got multiple people...
Oh, yes, sir.
You know what I'm saying?
Let us keep working on it a little bit, we'll still get... Discuss the sale and removal of the strip of house process. Christina, you wanna take this one?
Yes, um, the commissioners have sent me a list and I've been slowly working on my list and the next thing is the strip of house, I need a formal vote on what y'all want me to do. Um, I'd ask Mike to kind of present y'all some legal options on what you can and cannot do with the strip of house.
Sure, and I think y'all got an email from me too, so, um, um, yeah, I mean, I think it, obviously you could, uh, you can sell it on the land or you can sell it separate from the land. I think what you're talking about is separating it.
To be removed.
To be removed and if that be the case, I think you legally justify, you could, of course, you can always bid or auction if you want to, to sell it to be removed, but I think you could probably also do a private sale, just has to be for fair market value. Um, and, you know, hopefully we can get some appraisers or render some opinion on what the fair market value is and as long as the person you sell it to pays that or higher, you're fine.
So we can go out for, so the board can vote tonight, you go out for a sealed bid process to have the home removed?
Yeah.
And we'll have, who would you get to come in to value that home?
What you do with sealed bid, you don't have to get an appraisal.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, if you do it by sealed bid or sometimes get the auctioneers to handle that sort of thing, I don't know if they're around much anymore or not, uh, so sealed bid or auction, you don't need an appraisal, but if you just identify a private person and, and negotiate it like you would between individuals, that's when you need the appraisal.
I think, I think the sealed bid process is much simpler, it's much smoother, it's cleaner.
So we were just analyzing that and...
Yeah, I'm surprised you do the whole sealed bid process.
That's your review?
Yes.
To be removed.
To be removed.
Wherever the buyer wants, wherever the buyer wants.
And cost of removal would be the buyer's responsibility.
And would, would we designate a timeframe it had to be moved in?
Probably.
Absolutely. What's up? Get that done tomorrow.
But yeah, that's what...
But like doing that, we still, we can reserve the right to reject it, you know.
Certainly.
Yeah, sure. All right, so, uh, I'll request a motion to approve to go out for sealed bid for the strip of house.
Will we proceed with it?
Motion by Commissioner Shannon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kurt.
And with the board.
Uh, yeah, pretty much. I don't remember this on Frank, it's on you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
All right, you got it, Commissioner. We'll work out, we'll send you a copy of what she was. Be able to do that, she was. Yeah. All right, item number seven, consider request for qualification for the historic courthouse preservation plan historic structure report.
So this is another one on the board's list that I am working on slowly. Um, we had a hazardous mitigation survey done and I gave that to the board. I received one quote to have those hazardous materials removed. Um, I went on another company and they're just too busy, so I reached out to another one, I should have a second quote by the end of the week. Um, but as I was doing this, I reached out to Ms. Everlyn Reese, she's on the Athens Park County Historic Preservation Board, and I asked for just some information, what I'm doing, what I need to do, the steps I need to do. I also reached out to Northeast Georgia Historic Preservation Consultant, she helped me some work with Ms. Lydia. Um, this is a RFQ to have an architect come in and provide a preservation plan in that historic structure report. So we have to have this preservation plan before we can go out to an engineer or a construction firm to actually do, through rehabilitation, is what this project will be, is under rehabilitation. So this is just the board's approval for RFQ, I sent it out earlier, because I just got it today, it's a pretty tight turnaround. Um, I've made some changes that Commissioner Doster pointed out and then Mike, me and Mike worked on some stuff after four thirty, he made some more changes to the, what was it called?
Yeah, I just associated O and B guidance for grants and agreements where it says common rule selection process.
That was one of the things that you just pointed out.
Yeah, I do it all day.
So, Ms. Lydia, this is some other information, uh, Ms. Lydia advised that this would probably be a twenty to thirty thousand dollar, once we get it back, that is why it would cost twenty to thirty thousand dollars to have this architectural report done. Um, but the reason why I'm, I've pushed it a little bit is so we can meet a timeline to apply for a grant in February to reimburse it.
Unfortunately, it's one of those, you have to spend a little money before you can apply for money.
Yep.
But I'm hoping to have the other hazardous stuff removed, have that done here, you know, hopefully by the end of the year, again, this is next year, which does not interfere with, with this, I make sure of that.
So I'll ask for a motion to move forward with the RFQ that Mr. Baxter just referenced.
I make a motion to move forward.
Motion by Commissioner Kurt, second by Commissioner Doster. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I just, being in this field, it's, it's really important to get this stuff documented to move forward with at larger asking because these are the type of reports that people wanna see what kind of money that you're asking for for other grants and other applications. And make sure that, that whoever's gonna do our remediation, make sure that we include appropriate documentation of what's done and after accounts, because that will have to go in with some of these other reports to prove that we've done it properly.
All right. Christina, you know, I think it's on you.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Consider camper primate extension for Jeff Winston. So, I think y'all have some information on this one. Hey Jeff, what you got going on?
Um, we just need to extend it probably ninety days at the most. Uh, we had hoped to be done, of course, long before now and, uh, we spent quite a bit of time out of town, my mother passed away, I was tearing her house and we have to take care of her before she passed, because we just got behind on it. And so we've got three sides, a siding is still due, fascings soft to do, then the four-foot porches on the front and back, then we still need to do, uh, other than that, we're pretty well done with it.
Where is this one at? Is this along ninety-eight going up toward Midway Road?
No, sir, this is on Highway one ninety-one, you can't see it from the road.
The reason, the reason I was asking, um, I think Eddie, you may have some stuff we need to touch on on this one, because I was under the understanding that you'd already moved in the house.
Me?
Yeah.
I wish.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, I thought you was moving. As you wish to.
They do have a camper out there?
Yeah.
And, um, they're, they're still occupying the camper, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then they have, uh, he actually had emailed me and sent me pictures of the interiors, so there is some stuff inside, but, um, there's no clear indication that they're staying there.
Okay, all right. I just wanna make sure it's clear, if any clarity, because we thought maybe they...
He had a passing inspection in May, I think it was, for the permanent power, I think that was...
Yeah, for the central power.
Yeah.
Here's some pictures of the inside of the home.
Yeah, these are the pictures that he, Jeff actually emailed me.
Kitchin. Eddie, is there anything that, that you feel like we need to be aware of?
Um, other than just, um, like I said, he is making progress, so...
Is there no citation issues or...
No.
Okay.
How long are you requesting it for?
I mean, about ninety days is probably more than enough. I didn't know how the extensions went, if they break them up, however.
No, that's fine, ninety days.
Okay.
See any reason that would work?
As long as they can... As long as they can get everything completed and the CO issue, ninety days. And like I said, all they have is there's some exterior work to complete in the porches.
Yep.
All right. They can give a CO, they can give a CO, not a TCO or CO.
A CO, permanent CO.
We'll entertain a motion to do a thirty day, I'm sorry, a ninety day camper extension, Mr. Jeff Winston.
I make the motion to.
Motion by Commissioner Kurt. Second by Commissioner May. Any other discussion, gentlemen? If you mind, Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We put you at the bottom just, just because.
That's fine.
You wanna see all this other stuff. Mr. Benzmore, have a great evening, sir.
Last thing starts with a W, I've been at the bottom for a long time.
Thank y'all. Discuss a regi- uh, resolution to establish a twenty twenty-four election qualifications. If we lower them, somebody will run against us. I think we just have to settle and resolve it.
Yeah, you just, just for discussion, we'll vote on it at the end of the month.
No problem.
Um, all these are set by the HR office, just for the public to know, the HR director, she sets these, they're, it's a percentage based off of base salaries, so they will constantly increase year to year. Um, the board of education, they set their own, um, so.
And both, when you say sets, you mean computes, because they're set by statute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Compute then.
Yes, I, I don't know what they make, so I have to call it.
Yeah, exactly. She didn't have any discretion, she just goes with that.
Yeah.
Any urgent matters, gentlemen? Only thing I have urgent is to say, I'm going.
Can I get a point of fact from that urgent matter?
I, I should have asked at the end of the animal control. And I don't know if they'll require a vote or anything like that with the animal control. With the board's permission, I'd like to start going ahead and applying for some of the equipment to come in for animal control, not spending money, but go out for the, I guess you call them donations or the grants that we qualify for.
Yeah. Cause I, I think you're limited on those anyway, so I mean, it wouldn't hurt, because you, I mean, we're gonna need something somehow. Only problem is if you get stuck in sizes, there you go, problem.
Um, getting some of the kitchen equipment in particular, uh, things of that nature, I can apply for that I don't wanna do without the.
Well, we still gotta get through this year, so we gotta have today.
Well, if I apply for it this year, maybe I can apply for it next year too. But.
Marshall.
Right, right.
The only thing I had to say under urgent matters, I just wanted to reiterate how important of a job that Christina Baxter does. Uh, I had felt terrible today and she said, no worries, I got this. And when she's got it, she's got it. I just wanna say.
Well, in, in regards to that, I talked to Christina about that too, and she asked me, is it true, the one that gets the chief gets the big chief? And I said, yes, so, you know, the target's on me.
I can tell you right now, when it's, it's, when, if it's when, I'll get, if something happens, all my power and fun. Because she is, uh, one of the best things that ever happened to this county. And by the way, I saw today something, you got nominated for something also in the chamber, our president, what is it?
Oh, I'm just doing the leadership program.
Okay. They're gonna go all, both of them will be out of town.
That's, that's their first step and run for governor.
Yeah, governor will let Terry strike calling you there for a while, he's been calling me since like thousand and ten. Uh, executive session to discuss real estate acquisitions, personal matters, potential litigation.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Doster.
Moving adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Oh.
I think it's the shit of what we do, and, and, uh, the, 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 they.
Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah, we get.
Whatever.
I think, I, 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 I.
I did. So, uh.
Yeah, interesting. I mean, just Chris, I tell you, so, well, what is good, I mean, where you can be, yeah, personally, I suggest that you should just put in.
People are a lot of money being.
Okay. I'd say, I'd say, buddy, you know, which is also.
You look at them.
So he is, I think, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Got shoes on, Gary, that's, that's.
Oh, he's had him cross. He's almost.
That was it. So, I mean, that's.
I'm, I'm.
Much better.
That was just the life of the children.
Joey.
I don't know.
I didn't have the number before, and I think he meant one sixty thousand.
Yeah, I'm freezing. And I'm still.
Yeah.
I was, I was.
I know. And that's what I was.
The problem with Brian Clay and the music, the Catholic.
Yes, why do you do?
I, in my personal experience, I've got, I've, 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 I've.
That's what.
Cause a lot of people just want.
That's counsel.
I, I, you, and nobody's gonna shake my hand. I'm gonna shake my hand. Yeah, I do.
Uh.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Never years, ninety, uh.
River feet.
River feet.
Okay.
Uh.
All right, well, I appreciate it. That was really good to go.
A lot of the river was not.
I want you to go with it.
Every time the river rises, so much dirt over the steps going down, it's what helps the way that it flows.
I know, I know.
You're welcome.